Uh, needs my make a motion to approve this agenda?
Make a motion to approve, generally as if.
So.
All in favor?
Uh.
Sisters comments. It don't matter. Alright, Greg Rice, please state your name and address, please, for the record.
Gregory Rice, I live at three fifty-two East Oak Street here in Covington. Here before you today in regards of what happened to Mr. Ricky, Richard Jordan, at the baseball, at the football game. Uh, first I want to go over, in Virginia, police cannot use neck, police cannot use neck restraints, which include chokeholds unless it, unless it is immediately necessary to protect themselves or other persons from serious bodily injury or death. The law prohibits chokeholds and other neck restraints as a standard practice, but allows them only in extreme situations where there is imminent threat of serious harm or death. The definition of a neck restraint, the law defined neck restraint broadly to include any action using a body part or object to apply pressure against the neck to control movement or restrict blood flow of breathing. Committed uses, the only exception is in situations where it also believes the use of a neck restraint is immediately necessary to protect themselves or another person from seriously bodily injury or death. If you also went to the game, if any of you have seen the records going around, you can see Ricky was not being belligerent, he was not being nasty with anyone. Uh, I'd like to pass these two pictures around to show you that he, the sheriff himself stated that he did not choke Ricky. If you look at these pictures, you'll see that the sheriff's hand is around Ricky's neck, and after it goes from his neck, it slides up to his chin. I'd say I come here to, I come to you with a concern regarding Mr. Richard Jordan. I've seen the footage several times and cannot believe the sheriff more can honestly say he did not put his hands on Mr. Jordan's neck. This matter could have been resolved in a totally different manner. One, he could have let the three deputies handle the situation, or he could have de-escalated the situation by asking him to come down the steps and have a conversation. At no time during the encounter did I hear Sheriff Moore identify himself. As, as a matter of fact, when I seen the, the man in the plain clothes, I didn't recognize who he was myself, and I know, I know Mr. Moore pretty good, but when I seen him in the plain clothes, I really didn't recognize him. This situation was not handled at all the way it should have been. If you look at the video, you can see the fear in your kid's eyes, and you could hear his son asking, "What did my dad do?" This is not how an adult should handle a situation like this. A man was being choked because he was 14. I have heard that the lady that complained said she didn't imagine that this would happen. He didn't say anything to me, I just couldn't see. So what's gonna happen when the crime is really committed if you do this for choke, for cheering? I personally do not think that the investigation should be handled by the state police, a group that he worked with. The investigation should be handled by an outside source. Tensions already high enough in this area and has been for some time. If the elected officials cannot tone it down, then you should not be in your position. I know you said it didn't happen, but pictures and videos say different. So. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next will be Karen Jordan, who states your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Karen Jordan, and I live at six oh seven South Allegheny Avenue, Covington, Virginia. Um, in reference to, two different things, really. Um, one, I'm here to stand for my brother because he works, um, every day thirteen hours. He gets up three o'clock in the morning, he goes to work, comes home, takes a shower, and goes to his son's game. So it's like, people were saying he was intoxicated at the game, he was not. He had worked a thirteen-hour shift, came home, took a shower, and went directly to the game to see his son play. So, you know, people saying he was intoxicated is not true. Um, also, what I want to comment is about, you know, I was born and raised here my whole life, love our community, but I see a change, and not for the good. It's like we're going backwards, and I know we can't change people, we can only work on ourselves, but, um, working in the school system, and then I have a job in the community at a gas station, I see a lot of diversity. We're not fooling together anymore, we're kind of pulling apart. It's my race and your race, and I see it on a daily in my job at the gas station, you know, and it's not, it's just, I, I want to leave, but my mom's here, my mom is eighty-eight years old, and I would never leave her, but the first chance I get, I'm leaving, because I'm not comfortable here anymore, and I love this town. So we gotta do something to build our community back together as a community and not separate people. So we need to figure out something to fix this, I think, that's all I got to say.
Please don't leave. Please don't leave.
I don't want to, but I just may have to.
Alright, Marie Fitzpatrick. State your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Marie Woods Fitzpatrick, four 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 East Hughes Street. Um, I had to bring two things up here just in case my device goes out, so. Uh, on the, when I signed in, it said a reason for your, um, being here, and what I want to do, I want to have a conversation, and that requires an interaction, so even like, even upon leaving here tonight, I still want to continue to have the conversation. Um, I am not, uh, originally from Covington, but I've lived here most of my life and used to, um, talk to people about being a transplant, but I've been here longer than I've been anyplace else. My children, uh, went to Covington High School, they both went away to school, uh, two of them have master's degrees and the other one has a PhD, so, you know, we, um, we love the area. My husband, you couldn't get him out of here, trying to go for years, he wouldn't go anywhere, so now, I, I feel really good in the community. I, I do participate in a lot of activities, um, and I think I know everybody here. I was back talking to Karen, I said, "I don't know people like I used to, so I'm gonna have to come more often so I can actually learn people." Of course, we know Adam. And Mr. Hunter, and I remember Mr. Forbes, I didn't know who Mr. Goff was, and I think I met Ms. Crowder, uh, maybe at a game or something, but anyway, um, I'm here to speak up on behalf of Mr. Richard Jordan about an incident that occurred on September nineteenth at an Allegheny High School, uh, football game on Casey Field. And you're gonna hear me say this throughout my dissertation, I want to talk. Let's talk about the five fundamental rights that are guaranteed to U.S. citizens. Number one, freedom of speech, the ability to express oneself without government censorship. Number two, freedom of religion. Number three, freedom of press, the right to use media to publish information without government interference. Number four, freedom of assembly, the right for people to gather peacefully, and freedom number five, the freedom of petition, the ability to appeal to the government for changes. Let's talk about remaining silent in the face of injustice. That is not a neutral act. It's a form of complicity that empowers the oppressor and perpetuates harm. Being neutral in unjust situations inherently supports the side of the oppressor, as silence can be perceived as acceptance or consent. Speaking out, as we're doing here this evening, even with small actions, is a crucial act of courage that can lead to significant change by supporting victims regardless of fear of retribution and can undermine oppressive systems. Let's talk about the job of our police departments to maintain peace and protect all citizens regardless of sex, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, age, religion, and this is another ELC, the social status, because that happens sometime too, and the list goes on. Let's talk about how that protection should be done. Everyone deserves respect, and what happened on September nineteenth didn't reflect that standard as demonstrated by our law enforcement. Covington has always joined together, in sporting events especially, to support our children and their families. What did occur, as I perceive it, because I was not there, was a display of misuse of authority, and Mr. Jordan's rights were violated. We've seen the videos, the commentary, the press conferences. What we haven't seen were any display of humility, compassion, empathy. These are things you can't touch, and I, I personally feel like there's, there should be an apology somewhere. I haven't heard any apologies. Uh, the fruit of the spirit, Galatians five, twenty-two and twenty-three, we talk about love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, and self-control. Law enforcement, I'm sure, have been taught to de-escalate situations, but what we witnessed that night was an escalation that surprised our entire community and our children. I was saddened and sickened, yet emboldened to come and speak out. Let's talk about the atrocity that occurred on September nineteenth. Casey Field reminds us not to allow the return of human strife. Attacks like this, if allowed to continue, will encourage a return of a very dark period in our history that some will choose to forget. Silence is not an option. Ecclesiastes three and seven says, "There's a time to keep silent and a time to speak." Mr. Jordan and his family have been, have suffered humiliation, and suffering demands a response. Apathy and silence will allow repeat offenders. People in power think too much of themselves. History must not repeat itself. We may be persecuted, but we're not distressed. We're all brothers and sisters. Be concerned when others suffer, and we're sometimes insensitive when suffering is not our own. Let's talk about it. Let's talk about healing and next steps to ensure that all citizens are treated, treated equitably. We need diversity training along with accountability for unwarranted and unnecessary acts of brutality. Let's work together to restore dignity to our community. Don't be afraid to speak out when injustice occurs, and I'll leave you with this quote by Martin Luther King. "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the songs of our friends." Thank you.
Alright, Dolores Quarles. State your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Dolores Quarles, my address is seven zero one Wright Stanley Avenue, Covington, Virginia. And, um, I just want to, ditto what a lot was saying before me, but I wanted to come because I am from this area, um, spent most of my life, I went away and came back several times, but I'm from here, so can't nobody tell me about Allegheny County and Covington, Virginia, because we have a lot of roots here, and I raised my son here, and my fam, a lot of my family is still here. Um, I just want to come today because I'm involved in the community in a lot of different aspects, and, um, I have a great level of concern, a great level of concern, for, as Ms. Jordan has stated about this area, um, far as being here, living here, for our children, our community, um, a lot of things people don't want to talk about, fear of their job, fear of retaliation, uh, fear of difference of opinion, but, um, those things need to be talked about. So the incident that happened with Mr. Jordan, uh, I think it was deploable, I think it was insulting, and I think it was excessive, and some people say deadly. Um, I'm standing here today, my major concern, and I don't want to repeat a lot what they said, is my concern is, the sheriff stands, in his press conference, he said he's standing behind his actions. And that, to me, I was not at the game that day, but he's standing behind his actions, actions and his staff's actions on that particular night, so that means that, to me, that said that was acceptable. We don't want it to happen again to somebody else's child, to our family member, to another relative round here, and I'm like Mrs. Fitzpatrick right here. Um, I wasn't there, but it seemed to be very embarrassing that someone would use, um, a badge to, um, quote-unquote, use as a de-escalating tactic to try to contain Mr. Jordan. Um, that's no way to restrain an individual on, on any levels. Someone comes to you, they want to choke you, if it was for me, if they wanted to choke me, I think you're gonna try to bring harm to me, not, not contain me or, or, or de-escalate the situation, means like you want to bring harm to me. And to have his son there that night, asking, I'm sure that his feelings and emotions is beyond measure what he felt on his senior year, seeing his dad be handled like that. There's a time, there's a place, and there's a way to do things, and that's what I believe. Um, like, I'm like Mrs. Fitzpatrick, no apology has been said. We are a community, we're a small community, but we're a strong community, but it takes several people like ourselves to come here, to have the, um, the fortitude and don't mind coming and speaking about those things that make people uncomfortable. And so I just want to reiterate there, uh, reiterate that, and, um, I think there's time for some change. I did sit on a committee a while back, but it seemed to have dissolved, and it was a committee that had, um, joined with all forces, Covington City, Clifton Forge, Iron Gate, and tried to have a diversity and inclusion, um, committee, but it keeps getting resolved, and I'm not sure why. Um, my guess is these hardcore issues that nobody want to talk about, um, you know, people just don't want to deal with them, but it's here in Covington, Virginia right now, it's here in Allegheny County right now, and, um, I think we have a good community, I think the schools being consolidated right now, we still have challenges, you're gonna have them no matter what, but I need, we need to deal with them and not let them just slide with open under the rug, because those things that's put up in the rug and never dealt with, they just stay there, and we hope that it don't get worse, we hope that nobody else has to experience, your sheriff, your family member, my family member, have to experience anything like this in this area again. But one thing about, um, officials, some are elected and some aren't, so we just kind of let our voice be heard. And also, this is off the record on another note, I came here a long, a while back about the signs and stuff that y'all placed over in Delaney, they were very effective, um, my mom, they, she lives there, I haven't talked to Hammond and Mitchell, but they said that, um, it had cut down to like ninety percent, maybe one get lost every now and then, but the signs that y'all placed there helped out tremendously, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Y'all very much for your comments. Alright, now we're gonna move on to report to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, appreciate this opportunity to update you folks on some good things. First, I want to say, thank you, appreciate you being here this evening. We here, and we have already, from the cities and the things, have had some serious discussions, so I thank you for being upfront and with all of us tonight, so, uh, thank you. And I can assure you that Chief Smith and Alan Dressler, that we have spoken on our end and had a conversation with other local law enforcement, so thank you all very much. A couple things, um, first off, uh, everybody's been aware, we've had a hole out here for some time at the intersection of Court and Locust. Uh, I want to thank our local contractors, uh, for digging down deep and, uh, helping us locate, uh, two fourteen-inch terracotta pipe that had collapsed, and in the process of them collapsing in storm water rolling through there and eroding the earth is why we ended up with the sinkhole. Um, it has been repaired, and we appreciate those folks that worked hard at performing that work for us, hopefully to get paved over before, uh, winter sets here on us. Princeton Waterline Project is complete, got a little tidying up to do, and, uh, instruction has been given to make sure that road gets paved before winter sets in, but, uh, again, a nice job by, uh, city employees as well as some contractor help. Uh, I appreciate the compliments Mrs. Crowder made this evening about the Mid-City Mall parking lot. It's a very friendly parking lot, it's nice and clean, and, uh, again, there were three, as many as three, if not four, local contractors, again, involved in that project. We do good work here in the Allegheny Highlands and Covington, Virginia, uh, very proud of the lot, how it turned out, uh, as you've heard me comment about a livable community. Again, these things add to, uh, the feel-good of people in their downtown and things of that nature, so very, very pleased with our project there. The Wayfinding Sign, uh, Sign Project, I thank you for the compliments on how nice the signs are looking, we're getting there, and it's certainly been an ongoing process. Uh, as I mentioned to you, it's jointly done with the city, the town of Clifton Forge, the, uh, Allegheny Highlands Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, and the Allegheny Foundation, uh, and the Wayfinding Signs are a means of helping people get around, uh, the community. Sometimes you can get lost, uh, more so in a small town than you can in a big city, so, uh, we got ample signs up now to help get you to the important places in, in Covington, Virginia, so, uh, pleased with that project, hopefully within the next week, week and a half, we'll be wrapped up with that. I made mention to you about the EV charging station at the farmer's market, it's up, uh, the next one will be right out here at City Hall, we changed our direction on that one, uh, again, to encourage folks to plug in their car and, uh, go have a bite to eat and visit our shops downtown and, uh, spend time at our Discovery Center and our depot and places like that, so, uh, we're just, we're pleased with, uh, how the first ones came along and our staff's working on the, the charging, uh, aspect of that, and our, we will be right in line with, with the town of Clifton Forge is doing with the fees to, to charge your vehicle. Our Homecoming Parade with the Allegheny Cougars last Monday went off with, uh, out of itch, very well attended, we ended up, uh, down at Casey Field with the bonfire, and we decided, uh, as a collective group of folks with the city of Covington and our school system to make this a homecoming week. Folks did, uh, do a little decorating in front of their businesses in downtown, and we recognize fall sports, not just our football team, but all of our fall sports, and for those that are keeping track of things, we, uh, do have a, a very good football team, you know, we got a very good volleyball team, and our cross-country folks have been doing very well, and, uh, as I mentioned in speaking with law enforcement today, our event at the sport complex a couple weeks ago with cross-country was like a small community there all at one time, we had elementary, middle school, and varsity runners, and, uh, it's just a joy to work with Jeremy Bartlett, he, he worked well with, uh, the recreation department and myself, and communicates, and we're just tickled to death to accommodate those folks and do, do what we do. Also like to call out the fall harvest decorations around town, uh, there's no secret, this is perhaps one of my favorite times of year, and, uh, our recreation department and Kevin Pettit in particular does an awesome job of, uh, touching base on the points of interest as you come into our community. I got a couple other recreation, uh, folks that, uh, assisted with the bears, the, around hay bale bears, that's a highlight of the community, and we placed, uh, a couple bears over at the Jackson River Sport Complex, and you can imagine how many pictures we're taking with the fifteen hundred to two thousand people down there a couple weeks ago with the, uh, cross-country event, so, uh, it's, uh, and unlike over here at Durant Road, those kind of are, are the welcoming of folks getting off interstate, and that's a tough spot to get, get a cool picture with the traffic, so our staff decided, uh, boss man, we're gonna do a little sport complex too, and it's been, uh, been a big hit, so, uh, appreciate the vision for the folks that, that, uh, put that together for us. Fall cleanup, uh, each week, I try to shout out. Fall cleanup, each week, I try to shout out a group of folks. Going to extend that. First, I want to shout out Becky Knuckles for standing in with us this evening. She's missed being the clerk for a long time now. She was so tickled today, knowing what was in front of her. But I, again, and I can't, you know how I feel about Becky Knuckles, and I appreciate her. I wanted to say kudos to Amber. Amber has taken this time to further her knowledge and education in the clerk of work for our city council. And we appreciate her taking advantage of what has been offered from that standpoint. She's been doing a very nice job. And a big shout out to all of our folks involved in the fall cleanup the last two weeks. I think a lot of our residents take some things for granted. That's a service that we provide to our residents here in Covington, Virginia. Over the two-week period, we collected 132.12 tons of undesirable stuff, which amounted to 44 loads. And we also picked up, and I know you'll shake your head at this, 182 tire firsts. So again, thank you, city council, for allowing us to work with budgets and things that we provide our citizens here in Covington. From the spring and fall cleanup to the keeping things as best we can with our utility rates, our water and our sewer. We work hard at maintaining a rate that is affordable to all. There'll be a time when that's going to have to be addressed again. We thank you for listening to us and believing in us in the direction that we're going to look after the citizens of Covington, Virginia. The hydro flushing is to begin on October 12th through the 24th. We do that in the evening. One of us encouraged to do that several years ago for the purpose that we don't want to disrupt your water service during the course of the day. We never know when you're taking a shower or bathing your baby. So we begin this process at 11 o'clock at night and take it right up to about 7 o'clock the next morning. Our staff has been advised to be mindful. We preach that we all have a job, but sometimes we don't quite realize that there's responsibility that goes along with that job. So we preach that every Monday morning with our staff, meetings, and, you know, rather than, and we had a lady in here last month about water when we do the hydro flushing, and that has been addressed. And we hope that heed has been taken and we do a better job. But again, there's a purpose. We used to do little to no flushing. Then we started doing it once a year, but there was one of us that thought that we needed to do that twice a year for the simple fact that if we have a fire, we don't want to hiccup with anything coming through our lines that disrupts the ability to fight that fire. Meeting in November on Veterans Day, November 11th, city council. Certainly, if you wish not to meet that day, just please let Amber, myself, or Becky know. I know there's been a little talk about that with Veterans Day falling on that Tuesday this year. So again, just let us know, and if you choose not to meet, then we'll get proper advertisement out. Also, and I appreciate the comment about our joint meetings with Planning Commission and city council. Council, years past, decided to do that so that when it took place, everybody was on the same page at the same time. Everybody heard the exact same thing. If our current council, if we think it's in the best interest of separating that the way we did years ago, you have my support. We'll just need to communicate, perhaps mayor and the chairman of the Planning Commission. I can certainly speak with our developmental services department lead. So again, chat amongst yourselves, and we can do what you feel is in the best interest of working with our planning commission and come time for our vote to say yay or nay on a proposal. Of course, our council manager conference this weekend. This year, it is in Roanoke, Virginia. Appreciate our attendance and look forward to being together. For those that are new and haven't been, the fellowship is awesome. You will find that everyone has the same challenges. We're not different. So look forward to being together, going through the sessions. And don't be afraid to introduce yourselves and chat with others. Big city, small community, we all, we do face the same challenges in local government. And it's not, as you folks have witnessed as elected officials, it's not an easy job to serve your public, and everyone has an answer. But you five are the ones that have been voted to do it. I'm one that's been asked to be the moderator, VP. So, you know, we're called upon to lead, and that's what we intend to do in the best interest of the citizens of Covington, Virginia. And finally, I'll wrap up. Our picnic this Friday with our employees, 12 o'clock. We'll all gather at the Jacksonville Sport Complex and break bread together. That's an important time for Alan Drusler to recognize our people. We do it in the spring, leading into Memorial Weekend. We do it in the fall, leading to Columbus Weekend. And we do that ourselves here. And then our holiday meal is, Good News Church has been assisting us with that in a few years. It's good to have that time together as employees and not be too concerned about this, that, or the other. Generally, I ask that we only talk about Green Bay, Virginia Tech, and George Strait. I'm going to change my direction this year, because other than George Strait, everybody else not doing very well. So we're going to strictly discuss deer season, because it's right in front of us, and all those fun things, and the leaves changing color and so forth. So with that being said, again, I thank city council for working with us, for your support, believing in our vision. And one last thing, I want to thank Ms. Wolf. She called me the other day to let me know about the number of folks that have caught her and had nice things to say. I'm proud to say I don't know that I don't know about a day that someone hasn't had something good to say about their community. But thank you, Ms. Wolf, for passing that on. And you reply back to our citizens, and I have certainly passed it on to our folks. The group that did the fall cleanup, no complaints. That's good, really good. I actually had a citizen call me as I was on my way to Carolina. "What can I do to help those boys?" And that was much appreciated. So I thank our citizens that are listening this evening for recognizing and supporting the city employees. Thank you all very much. Any questions? All right.
I did see on Facebook where somebody commented they were watching the men pick up refuge in the alley. Something had got in and turned it all over, it was everywhere. And they took the time to pick it all up and clean it up nice, and they made a comment on that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And as you've seen, we're doing some sidewalk work. We have some bid going out for a bigger sidewalk project in our community. But we're doing some repair work right now, concentrating on Main Street, getting ready for our Christmas parade and all. We've got some trees that lifted up some concrete along the sidewalk in our trip hazards, so we're working on addressing that as we speak. And I hope the bids are not too far off of meeting with our engineering firm tomorrow on that for some, getting information out to contractors on a bigger sidewalk project on the south end of town. All right, thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate it.
All right, council, we got any old business we want to discuss? Any new business you want to discuss? Or anybody, any citizens want to make any comments? All right. I guess that'd be all for the morning. Anybody want to make a motion? The chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I'll leave favor.
Aha.
You didn't give the city Casey Field to the county, but because it's the Allegheny.